The June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four Board of Education's regular meeting. The time is six thirty-three P M. And I'm calling this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call?
Devalla.
Here.
Heil.
Here.
Lavier Wright.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Can you join me for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? Vote?
Devalla.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Lavier Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
We are on to public comments. We appreciate and welcome comments from our stakeholders as part of District forty-nine's open forum. Please remain in your seat until called to the podium by the Board of Education chair. Once called upon, please approach the podium, state your name and a relationship to the district before beginning. Please speak into the microphone. Written statements may be left in the basket by the podium. We ask that you not address anyone in the audience and that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. To fulfill our values of trust and respect, we decline to create a forum for attacks or criticism against specific staff members, students, or other stakeholders. Therefore, with the exception of members of the Board of Education, the superintendent or the superintendent, personal complaints against individuals connected with the school system are prohibited in this forum. Follow-up action items may be assigned to the superintendent. In accordance with Board policy B E D H, open forum participation is limited to two minutes per person. It is the practice of the Board of Education to withhold any comment or direction to the superintendent until all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our stakeholder grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our D forty-nine community and guides the stakeholders through the correct people and processes to help resolve their concerns, including, as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the Board of Education. We encourage you to utilize this process if warranted, as many have successfully resolved their concerns this way. Thank you for participating in open forum. The views and opinions expressed in open forum are those of the commentators and do not necessarily represent official policy or positions of the District forty-nine or the Board of Education.
Annette Yaba, taxpayer from D forty-nine. I just wanted to make a comment about the comments that were made in our last meeting. Clearly hate is being taught in our homes, schools, and if not bad enough, we are letting it across our borders. It's no wonder that our young people hate our country. They've been brainwashed that way. We've heard hate, discrimination from a bully and a perfect D E I hire or justice warrior. These Marxists are happy to tear down our education and make the family unit obsolete to destroy our country. Let's remember that Democrats, Marxists now, owned most of the slaves, had the K K K, and tried to keep blacks from voting, while Republicans have fought against this. The chains that are holding us back is a liberal school union that doesn't want to actually educate our kids and a government that spends our future away. We have colleges that allow terrorists to take over campuses, damage property, and falsely imprison other students and staff. This is the hate being taught, and the left condones it. I am white, I am a Republican, but I am not the villain for speaking up for my country and telling the truth. Go Trump.
Okay, and it looks like no one else has signed up for public forum. So we are on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item, have an item they want pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Which item?
I actually have two. How would you like me to handle that? One at a time? I would like to make a mo, I would like to make a motion to move consent agenda item five point one oh waypoints, the cultural path to conduct, stability, and respect, to either discussion items or to postpone the item to a discussion maybe at the next work session. My reasoning for this is the student handbook is extremely comprehensive. It cites referencing, it cites and references eight state statutes, sixteen D forty-nine policies.
In depth, you can mention the items you want pulled or moved.
Okay.
But you don't get into the discussion right away.
Thank you.
And so which two items?
Um, the other one is moving K F A, which is currently, currently in the seven point six policy and procedure action item to a standalone action agenda item.
Okay, we can move them to an action item. But I think if we're going to move them to a discussion item, that would require a vote.
Point of order, right now, we're only discussing changes to the agenda that are consent. To do anything from, take to do, change any action item at this point would have occurred when we did the approval of the original agenda.
So we're back to just five point one zero. It could either be moved to an action item, but if it's going to be moved to a discussion item, that, that would require a vote. So we could just move that to an action item. Which number would that be if we move it?
So we cannot do any discussion on it?
In action. So which number would that be moved to? Okay, so we're going to move five point one two, action item seven point six. Then can I get a motion for approval of the revised consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as revised.
Second. Vote?
Devalla.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Lavier Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Then we are on to the superintendent update.
Excellent. So we will be modifying this agenda item going forward. In the olden days, we used to have each of our chief officers at the time submit a narrative about things that were happening. They gave updates, often affirmations and celebrations of accomplishments. We're going to return to that, and so I've asked our cabinet-level leaders, so those would be the four zone superintendents, the five executive directors of various areas across the district, they're going to be providing a narrative, we're going to be presenting that to you, in addition to the district dashboard that has always been available and is publicly available. And the purpose of that simply will be for the board to have a little bit more in writing in advance of this conversation, so that if you wanted to follow up on something or maybe acknowledge someone in particular, you'd have some reason to do that, you'd have some information about that. June is a, a wonderful month. We catch our breath a little bit. May is always the whirlwind, and then June, there's still a lot of cleanup after a whirlwind. So we're in that process. We're, we're doing a little bit of hiring, or a lot of hiring, we're doing a lot of training. We're figuring out new and timely ways to get to our central office up on, off Golden Sage. Right now, it takes twenty extra minutes to get all the way around, because we have to drive all the way past the property, turn left on Meridian, turn left on Bent Grass, come all the way back through the construction and into the building. And so if you have a meeting at that building, you need to book another ten, fifteen minutes at least to get there. Maybe easier for those of you coming down out of Falcon, but for the rest of us, it's a big loop. We have, we are, I'm excited about this. First time in eleven years, our entire cabinet is returning, and so that is very exciting. Appreciate that very much. We, we have a couple of principal hires that are already in place, that you already know about. Doesn't mean there won't be a July surprise, there often is, but it's looking really good on the leadership side. We're making very good progress on hiring generally, and so I'm, I'm just, I'm very pleased if we did an end-of-the-year kind of state of the district, we would say the state of the district is strong and getting stronger. And so that's a great place to be. It's really fun to start to see some of our graduates out in the world and doing good things, and some of them are off in their, in their spring and, and summer athletic preparations for college sports, some of them are in those last summer jobs before they take off, but all of them are well-prepared. I know that several of you are going to probably comment on our graduations, so I will just say generally that they were, they were fantastic. I just reviewed today a set of, just survey results that we asked people that were involved with leading those graduation ceremonies and, and attending and participating, and generally we had very, very positive marks on moving back indoors, moving back to the world arena. There are, it, it is really difficult to move seven thousand people off of a site promptly, and so the exit traffic is always an opportunity for improvement, but the ceremonies themselves were, were fantastic. There are, you know, there are some things that we'll manage better in terms of audio at, at some of the other graduations in other locations, goal specifically being at Robeson Arena for the first time, but boy, was it a good graduation season. Lots of good things going on, great student speeches. I think I heard a little bit of chat G P T here and there, and enjoyed seeing the culmination of twelve and thirteen years of hard work by our students, so. All very good, thank you, appreciate the opportunity to lead. When we have the work session, Dr. Nancy Lamond will sit here, as I will be phoning in from remote Alaska. I promise not to fish while I'm on the phone or the Zoom, but I can't say what I'll do right after. And so I will look forward to seeing you as we reconvene a board board meeting in August.
Thank you. Director Schmidt?
Yeah, I did the newcomer summit, and I don't know if you guys know, but the millions of people that, of the millions of people that are displaced, forty percent of them are reportedly children. At the newcomer summit, there was a three-student panel discussing the hurdles that those students face and what helped them feel more, most comfortable in the process, helping them to transition. All three students on both questions pretty much said their family helped them to keep regulating and on the right track. They also covered the discover, connect, and response technique to help kids regulate themselves when they get a little, you know, sad or upset or whatever. They also spoke about choral reading and tracking to help these kids learn language and reading skills, which is, by the way, the same techniques that our own James Irwin charter schools use, and it's very effective. Then we had the transportation tour. The transportation facility is amazing. I'm really glad that Pedro advocated for its construction. The bus barn is ginormous. They have this five-ton crane where you can drop new engines in, it's, it's just awesome. The security looks really strong at the facility and the offices where parents sign in for their kids for the ser, for the bus service. It's welcoming, but it's not overdone, so it doesn't look like, you know, the district has tons of money to waste. And then, as Peter said, graduations, I did three of them. All of them were very unique. The Patriot had very personalized messages for each graduate, and I think that's wonderful, that's something that's just not possible at the bigger schools. It was great to see that level of personal knowledge of each graduate, though. Liberty Tree only had nine graduates. That small number showed that, the conviction of those students and parents who rode out a pretty rough patch, and they believed in their school and teachers, and they reached graduation, so that was pretty awesome. And then finally, at Banning Lewis Prep Academy, graduation took place on their new football field. It's an amazing football field, if you get a chance to go take a peek at it. It's a really nice facility, it's got a, a real hometown feel. It was kind of windy, but it was still special. It was, it was good.
Director Heil?
So tonight, I'd like to talk to you about just one thing that I've been up to, to give you a quick introduction to a topic you'll be hearing about in a lot more detail in the coming months. So back at the annual planning summit, we learned from Dr. Fletcher that we faced about a hundred and sixty-five million dollars' worth of deferred maintenance for our facilities. To begin to address this, he formed a long-range facilities planning committee, and we have been busy. The Colorado Energy Office manages the Energy Performance Contracting Program. This provides an innovative funding model for capital improvements. What happens is, we engage an energy services company to audit our facilities and produce a project proposal that delivers savings on our utility bills. We borrow money based on those projections to pay for the project. At the end of the project, we then measure the cost savings. If we hit our target, then we use those savings to pay off the debt, and we have accomplished critical maintenance in a budget-neutral way. If the savings exceed the target, then that's additional resources we can use for other priorities. If we come up short, the state program requires that the company we have contracted must cut us a check for the difference and make us whole. This is an important protection for us that gives the contractors skin in the game to make sure that they can deliver what they promised. Dr. Fletcher invited two of these companies to come to pitch their services to D forty-nine. They sent teams to visit a sampling of our schools, which gave our facilities professionals an opportunity to directly engage with them, assess their knowledge, approach, et cetera. The long-range facilities committee then held separate meetings to meet each of the project teams and hear their proposals based on their initial assessments, and gave us a little bit of light reading to go along with it. So after some time to review the materials, we convened again to discuss the merits of each company and select one to recommend going forward. I can tell you that the consensus was that both companies were very strong, and we could not make a bad decision. We selected Schneider Electric. They are the number-one rated company in the nation in this kind of work, and among their recent customers in this specific type of contract are some of our closest neighbors, D eleven and D thirty-eight. So we have very high confidence in them. The next step in the energy management program is for Schneider to conduct an investment-grade audit of all our facilities, which will then feed into project proposals. Now, at this point, I can't say what size or scope the final project will be. We're just keeping an open mind for now. Let's let the project, process play out and see how the numbers align. In the meantime, just know that things are in motion that could benefit our schools in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Director Lavier Wright?
Just a few things. First, although students are out of school, there's still quite a bit going on in our district, so as you're driving around, you're going to see a lot of maintenance work going on in our campuses. There are buses driving all over the place, I'm assuming, testing new routes. I've watched them driving through our area as well. Summer school is finishing up in about one week, and then we'll probably see even more people hitting the ground. This is also, this month and next are the, the toughest for our finance guys, as they start finishing off the books for the year and starting the audit process. So although we don't have students in the building, we have a heck of a lot going on. I wanted to give kudos to the new Falcon High School principal, who will be the principal for twenty-four, twenty-five. Although officially, his tenure begins July first, that gentleman has been in that building almost every time I have been there as a parent of a kid in the school, including after classes were over when I was signing my son up for summer school, and when I was at Falcon High's graduation, lo and behold, Mr. O'Connor was there as well. So I'm really excited to see what new changes are going to be happening in Falcon High School, and I hope our entire community will stand behind the new leader and help us continue to improve the culture and climate in that community. He deserves respect, and already a ton of kudos, just because I can't imagine not yet even getting a paycheck and being there for two months straight, every free moment the man had.
Just for point of clarity, we do pay people when they, they start early. There's, there's an honorable way to do that, and so we do, we do that.
Still under contract with his other school, too, so he's doing both.
It is, it, which in no way, which in no way denigrates amazing, over-the-top effort already from, from Sean.
It's been incredible. And then, as another aside with my P T A hat, if you haven't seen it on the Facebook pages for Falcon yet, Falcon High received a mini-grant for refurbishing and creating flexible learning spaces within the high school, similar to the article that was published about Falcon Elementary School. There is currently a signup genius all over the Falcon Zone pages for furniture that teachers have requested, the goal being that the art students at Falcon High School will help refurbish and recreate the furniture, so that the students will also have ownership on it. So as you're cleaning things out and doing garage sales and all that kind of stuff, please check out that list. If you can't find it, email me and I'll help you find it and let you know what else has been added to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Lynn? Director Devola?
So I was able to attend a couple of our graduations. I would have liked to attend more, but with my schedule, it was a little hard to get to all three on one day. I will say that I did really enjoy attending the Banning Lewis Ranches graduation. That was the first graduation that I've been to for that school, and it was on their new football field. And I was thrilled to see that, actually, one of my former students in the front row, he saw me and was like, Mrs. Devola, Mrs. Devola, and he was waving, and I got to, to congratulate him as he crossed the stage, and that's very special to see former students who graduate from high school. I am very proud of him. I was also honored to accept the graduates at the Vista Ridge High School graduation. I really enjoyed being in the world arena and not having to worry about weather, although it was nice that day. Or it was a lot more accessible for our students with disabilities, so that was something that I loved to see. And that's all I have for our update, because I want to make sure that we get out of here before ten o'clock tonight.
Okay. It has been a wild and busy time. I attended the Falcon Homeschool Promotion Ceremony, the Allies' fifth-grade advancement ceremony, as well as the following graduations, Spring Studio, Vista Ridge, Sand Creek, Power Technical, Patriot High School, Liberty Tree Academy, and Goal Academy. The variety and styles of the different graduations were wonderful to see. It is exciting to see so many of our students as they prepare for the next stage of their lives, whether it's college, internships, military, trade school, or seeking full-time employment. Can we talk about Falcon High School baseball? Not only was it exciting to see their season go on and as they advanced towards the playoffs, and although, and by the way, that was the first time, although it didn't end the way we hoped it would, I am so proud of our staff and their coaches for taking graduation to the seniors on the team. They actually received their diplomas in their caps and gowns on the ballfield, from staff dressed in full regalia, and tossed their hats up into the air. I was really excited, because, I, I joke, but it's, it's true, I'm responsible for one of those players being on the planet, in that I accidentally introduced their parents many, many years ago. And so we won't single out Uriah Mess just by name, however, I'm responsible for him being on the planet, just so we know. His parents helped. His parents helped, I'd like to be clear about that. Okay. We had a few exciting moments when the invited guests arrived with only minutes to spare, including yours truly. I won't mention who a few of the others were. Like I said, it has been a wild and busy time, hasn't it, Superintendent Hiltz? Yes, okay. Falcon Herald has done some very accurate reporting on our board meetings, and I don't know if you saw, but they just did an incredible article on Goal Academy. I do have some of the graduation speeches from Goal Academy that I'm going to share with the board, and as always, that's just an incredible opportunity to attend one of their graduations. I think they had 17 graduations around the state. I had asked the director, so 17 different Goal graduations occurred across the state of Colorado. I have been coordinating with other board presidents about arranging a get-together over the summer, so that we can share ideas and encouragement. I want to say thank you to the staff and administration, hang on here, who have been busy with student registration and Base 49 over the summer. I also want to thank the anonymous community member who sent over the floral arrangement. I want you to know that you really made my day. That note was wonderful. Perfect. Now we're on to admin updates. Okay, administrative updates. Housekeeping. Please remember, when the school year starts again, whenever possible, schedule school visits with Lynette, so they can be prepared for you attending. Also, please remember to ask questions or concerns about items on the agenda to the appropriate staff members prior to the meeting, so that information can be shared with other board members. On May 14th, I was honored to be invited to speak before the El Paso County Commissioners. In this photo, I am with Roland Rainey from Banning Lewis Ranch Academy, and Jarvis Caldwell with New Summit, another charter school in District 20. I am so grateful that the El Paso County Commissioners unanimously passed a proclamation in support of charter schools, and if you get a chance after the meeting, that is the proclamation that they signed behind us. So it was really neat that they invited us to attend, and I think it's because we have so many different charter schools, and because of the resolution we did in support of charter schools. And that's all I have for administrative updates. I have one meeting off, and I get so out of sync here, so I know you had mentioned that earlier as well. Okay, can I get a motion for Action Item 7.1?
I move to approve the Coordinator of Health Services position.
Second.
Discussion? Can I get a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for Action Item 7.2?
I move to approve the Early Childhood Staff Aid position.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes. Can I get a motion for Action Item 7.3?
I move to approve the Transportation Parts Technician Position.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes. Can I get a motion for Action Item 7.4?
I move to approve the Discipline Secretary position.
A second.
Discussion? Can I get a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes. Can I get a motion for Action Item 7.5?
I move to approve the revisions to policies IKF, IKF-R, and IKF-E as presented.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Can I get a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for Action Item 7.6?
I move to approve the four policy updates.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we discuss a certain item? I would like to discuss KFA. Thank you. Last week, I was a little bit, or last meeting, I was a little bit derailed with the cruelty of some people, so I do want to make my comments, even though it is up for vote tonight. Using the word "threatens" is a very subjective word in this day. I have asked for clarification on the definition of how it is being used here, and from what I understood, I was just told that that was just how it was written, so that we might need some clarification on that. People might feel like they're being threatened when no real threat is present. For instance, at the last board meeting, many people used their First Amendment right to speak, to speak, to call ugly names. I had one of the security guards walk me to my car that night because I felt threatened. Outside, there was no real threat, even though I felt threatened. On another side of the issue, sometimes a person or people use the words for their own gain. We had a huge uproar in the recent years about board members being threatened by parents. Nationally, that was found to be a hoax. Landmark Legal found that of the 96 DOJ field offices, there were four reports of threats, and only one of those was a verified threat. In D-49, there were also alleged threats. I don't know if those were real threats, or if they were possibly sent to board members by someone using the word "threat" for their own political agenda. We might never know. The point is that that also happens. I feel it's really important to get this right. Words mean things. If we use the word "threatens," we should have a good definition of what that word means. Thank you.
Before we go on with any more comments, would you like to weigh in on this, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Brad Miller, Legal Counsel. For purposes of this statute, the language is lifted directly out of the, one of the guiding statutes, which is a criminal statute, 189109. And in that statute, which is actually relevant to some litigation we've got going on, it says, "No person shall willfully refuse to leave the property of any building or any facility used by any educational institution upon being requested to do so if such person is committing, threatens to commit, or incites others to commit any act which would disrupt, impair, et cetera, et cetera." So this is actually statutory language, and it's applicable to the situations you've described.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Can I get a vote? DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Thompson?
Aye.
And that motion passes, and now we are on to 7.7. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve Waypoints: The Cultural Path to Conduct Civility and Respect Rights and Responsibilities Handbook as presented by the administration.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to give my comments I was going to give earlier at the wrong time. This student handbook is an extremely comprehensive document. It cites and references eight state statutes and 16 D-49 policies. This arrived in our inboxes seven days ago. There has been no discussion on it, and we are being asked to vote on it in a consent agenda, which gives no transparency to stakeholders. The administration has been told that if there are no major changes, items can be adjusted, can just be added to the consent agenda, letting the board know that the item had been reviewed. I personally look at every single agenda item to see whether there has been a change to it or not. If we use a consent agenda to approve this, stakeholders are denied the opportunity to hear the details and discussion that pertain to this important handbook. Discussing agenda items in public is an integral part of the public board meeting process. Just because nothing has changed in the handbook doesn't mean that we approve it in a consent agenda without discussion, especially with new members who are unfamiliar with the handbook. New members deserve the respect of being able to ask questions and deliberate in what can sometimes be lengthy conversations. I've never read any of the past handbooks, and I have questions. I have a lot of questions. I take my board position very seriously. I spend many personal hours looking over state statutes and D-49 documents and policies, so that I can vote for the values of my community. I knew that spending a great deal of my personal time was part of that commitment when I took this on. I'm dedicated to being the voice of those who elected me to this position. Student outcomes, student safety, and transparency are some of what I was elected to work on. That means if I need to spend five and a half hours looking over curriculum, then that was what I was elected to do. If a public discussion, if it means looking over eight statutes and 16 policies, then that's what I was elected to do. If a public discussion causes a meeting to take a long time, then that is also what I was elected to do. This handbook warrants a good public discussion.
Director Heil?
So I also spent time reviewing this document, and I reached out to Nancy Lamond to say, have, you know, what has changed in this document, and I received the assurance that nothing material. So this is essentially continuing business as usual. In reading the document, I don't find anything that seems unusual. I'm familiar with our policies, and it conforms with our policies. I'm familiar with a number of the statutes, and it conforms with the statutes, and so I'm very comfortable with this document.
I understand the frustration in seeing it as a consent agenda item, but I've read the whole thing more than once, because my kids are current students, and as there are no changes, I'm pretty familiar with what they're being held accountable to, and this is actually far less wonky than the older version that this replaced a long time ago, and provides the active links to the relevant policies for parents, so that if they have questions, they can actually read the direct policy, which is really helpful as a parent when you have stuff going on. So I like the format as well. But more importantly, too, we no longer have a July meeting, and the consequence of no longer having a July meeting is that things they need in place for when school starts August 1st have to be voted on now in June. And so I appreciate that I don't have to worry about coming in July, but I wasn't part of the decision to remove that meeting. But this is a piece of what happens when we remove that one month, is now everything that they need for the very beginning of the school year we need to do now, because it wouldn't be appropriate to not have the student handbook approved before school starts. I do think it would be advisable in the future, when you have new board members specifically, so in an election year at least, to maybe have put it on the prior meeting, just so people have an information, so they have the opportunity to know what's coming up. Those of us who are more familiar with it, being told, "Hey, there's no changes," means for us, consent agenda is okay, but someone who may not be familiar, I understand that concern. But having said that, I really think it needs to be moved forward today, so that everything is in place for when our kids start.
Director DiVola?
Yeah, I'd agree with Director Lavier Wright as well, that in the, going forward, going in the future, it would be very important for this to be an action item and not on the consent agenda item, and probably one meeting prior to when we're voting on it, just for good practices. Also, I know that we had some email correspondence of what was changes and what was not, and there's already talk of how they're going to make sure they redline it for the next time, so we know exactly what was changed and what was not. But I do agree that we do need to vote on this, so it's put in place for this next school year.
This is an evolving document. When my kids were at Springs Ranch, Remington, Horizon, and Sand Creek, at the start of each school year, I got the student handbook. And if I'm correct, I think it's also published on the website, isn't it? And so, most of the changes we're talking about is, like, the two prior times, during the time I've been on the board where we voted on this, revisions were like, one revision was for the '23-'24 school year. So sometimes it's just referencing the time span. I don't know if Dr. Lamond wants to talk about anything else. I don't think there was anything else major, other than adjusting it for time. But if there are concerned community members, just know that this is on the D-49 website, and you can go through it. Some of the requirements in the handbook are statutory. They will be in there, and other times, they are things that have been approved, and I think it's worthwhile to bring it forward sooner, or to ever bring it up during agenda setting, if it's something that you want to review. So I do encourage the public to get to know the District 49 website, and see if there's anything there where you could direct questions to the board or to the staff, as applicable. Is there any further discussion?
Well, just quickly, I have two pages of questions and concerns, so who would I take that to?
I would recommend you send it to Nancy, and just because we're approving this so we can have it ready for the start of the school year, does not mean that this cannot be something that can be revised and worked on for future ones, but we do have to have one available for the start of the school year. Can I get a vote, please?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Thompson?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
We've been going so quick tonight, I'm having trouble turning my pages fast enough. Okay. We are on to discussion items, and we have a new course proposal.
Good evening. I am really happy to present to all of you this evening. This is my first opportunity to present to this particular board. I spent quite some time here at this podium, making many course proposals to the last board, and they were incredibly supportive. And as a result of all of their support, now I'm back here this evening, because we have a new need. So, a lot of the proposals that I made were of two different natures. So it was either Advanced Placement, AP courses, or it was also within our pathways. So that was the majority of the proposals that I made. We are now at the point, with what I'm here presenting to you this evening, that we have some students that are entering into the upper levels of our pathways, and in CTE, and they need something that will serve their needs and prepare them for their career pathways that they have chosen. And so, in most schools, you'll see that there is a student assistant course, and that's kind of a catch-all. You could be in the front office, delivering some materials to different classrooms. You could be helping a teacher in their classroom, and typically, that's something that's just a pass or fail. That does not fit the needs of what we have here. I know here in just a little bit, Sean Norman and his team are going to be presenting to you about all of the great things that they've done, and as a result of some of their work, we have some students that are ready, for example, within manufacturing for internships, but they are too young in order to enter into an internship. They're not 18 years old yet, and they have already entered into the upper level of that CTE pathway. And so we need to provide them with-
And so we need to provide them with a course that they can put on their resume when they go to apply for a job. And it's also going to provide them with some leadership, so that they can help a teacher prepare for class and for a lab, and that they can also mentor younger students. That's also the nature of what you're going to see within the health sciences proposal, in that those students are also in the upper levels of that pathway, and they are going to be helping to prepare for labs and mentoring entry-level students, and even mentoring and doing some small group instruction. So the ask that I have this evening is just to entertain any discussion, any questions that you all have. And then my specific request is that you would forward this to an action item.
Do we have any questions?
I do have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
Director Schmidt?
Let me see. As far as, can you tell me just a little bit more about getting students certified? I'm curious as to, certifying students at the high school level as opposed to post-secondary or concurrent, is there any extra cost to us to do that? Or is the best way to go to do it in high school?
For a student, for example, within our health sciences pathway, this year, many of our students were able to graduate with their certification in phlebotomy. We held a blood drive on our campus, and we had to sit on a waiting list because there were not enough phlebotomists in order to administer a blood drive in our, on our campus. And they had to bring in a team from Denver in order to do so. There weren't even any in our, in our area. So to answer the second part of your question, I would say, yes, there is an absolute opportunity for us to be able to help our students to get certified, for example, with phlebotomy while they're in high school, so that they enter the workforce ready to go with that position. To answer the first part of your question, this is part of the reason why it's so important that we partner, why we have people that are in Sean Norman's, Sean Norman's office, such as Kelsey Grimaldo, because she's the person who's the connector. She connects us with different places of work. She connects us with different industries who are in D-49 and in our area who have those needs. At times, there could be some type of cost, for example, to take an exam for certification. But in the long run, it ends up bringing revenue back into D-49, because we are supporting our own local small businesses here in our community.
And I did have one question on the shop thing?
Yes.
Personally, I'd like to see steel-toed shoes be a requirement.
Oh, yeah.
Manufacturers do require them, so they need to, students need to get used to them. But from my experience, accidents happen really quickly in manufacturing, and I just don't want the district paying for smashed toes. Smash injuries can be some of the worst, and may, can get infected, surgery, rehabilitation.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just a long-term pain, and, you know, so I would, I would ask that you consider
Yes, ma'am.
...making that a requirement, to have them in steel-toed shoes?
Sure, sure. I can definitely send that over to Mr. McKay. And students are expected to pass a safety exam before they can even enter into the lab area itself. Thank you for that.
Director Heil?
Hello. So I just wanted to, you know, to commend the new opportunity, I know you're always out there finding opportunities for this, and I absolutely love it, for students to exhibit and practice mentorship and leadership. These things are going to come at them fast and furious when they get out into the real world. Just as an example, my daughter, 19 years old, she was doing her internship, and she had a primary responsibility, and she, and an assistant who assisted her. So
Yes.
The more prepared these students can be for that, the better. One thing I found really interesting is you're, in the proposals, you're essentially trying to solve two very different problems with the same approach. So in the nursing, the health program, you're looking to try to grow your own teachers to continue the program? Is that what I'm reading here?
That could be part of it, yes. That could be, I would say, a great outcome of it. So part of what, well, going back to the beginning of my presentation, one of the lessons that I learned in making all my proposals, Mr. Graham said, Amy, put all the proposals in one. Don't put everything on this, a different agenda item. And I said, yes, sir, understood. So that was part of my own learning lesson and leadership lesson, and so that's why I put it into one agenda item. Because you're right, it is a similar proposal for two of our different pathways that have two different needs.
As far as the machining pathway, if these students have no further ways to make progress in this, keeping those skills warm is absolutely important.
Yep.
I mean, from my own experience, I've sat in a soldering lab, and then several months of education later, and, you know, landed in a working environment and came across my first problem that required soldering a few months later. I got the job done, but it was not pretty.
Yes.
And we want these kids to go into an internship or their first job right out of high school feeling confident.
Absolutely.
And so I absolutely support that.
Thank you.
Director DeVola?
I'm always excited to see the new proposals that you bring forward to us.
Thank you.
You are doing an amazing job of seeing a need and figuring out a way to, to meet that need. And so I fully support both of these.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Yes, I also wanted to add on that I like, not only the course proposals you bring forward, but both the innovation and the 360-degree view of how this could segue or attach to something else for the kids. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you so much.
If there are no objections, we can move this forward as an action item? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
9.2 Lead Facility System Specialist Job Description.
Good morning, Board. I'm Daniel Payne, Facilities Building Maintenance Group Manager. I'm here to request approval for a Lead Facility System Specialist. Basically, the low voltage system workload in our district is getting larger, and it's time to grow this segment of our maintenance department. Currently, we have one person district-wide to work on 10 different low-voltage systems, like fire alarm, card access, security cameras, and over time, the district is going to grow, and it's going to need to add more positions to make this department bigger, and this is the first step. This lead position is crucial to making future decisions in this segment of our department. And we've been working with the finance department over the last year, so this position would be funded out of our finance or our facilities budget, and most of the vital information is on the cover sheet, and I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Okay, and if there's no objection, we'll move this forward as an action item.
Thank you.
I'm the belt up, I'm appropriately dressed. Paul, you said you would help me. Okay, no help. So I, because I am managing and doing the oversight for technology now, for the IT efforts of the district, in reviewing our internal capacity, it's clear to me that the district would greatly benefit from a coordinator of IT position to come in-house and bring the disparate little groups that are currently operating to become more integrated so that we could really focus delivering best-in-show technology into our learning environments, particularly the classroom. Although there is probably one or two very strong internal candidates, this would be a new position. It would bring our current efforts in what's now, I think, kind of the ed tech space, primarily working with teachers and students in classrooms. We also have our, our technology space. One is our systems, network, security, and software, and managing the Sentinel efforts. It's our outside provider that really serves more or less as our in-house IT efforts. And then also what Mark Roscoe does, which is managing kind of the end user, that would be switches in schools and things like that. So in speaking to everybody and reaching out to stakeholders, I think previously there was an effort, they called it Edit, which was like ed tech and IT all combined. So part of this effort would help support also the physical relocation of this group over to the, over here to Creekside, and then they would be very, like, almost adjacent to where the Sentinel people are, because they've also moved here. So this, to me, makes a lot of sense. I do think it will leverage our efforts. The economic impact of this position would be about a $30,000 increase in cost, but I think we would see that in some of the savings and efforts, and, you know, kind of really get down to leveraging our in-house talent and working, as I said before, with our zone leaders and educators to deliver best-in-show to the classroom and to our students. So that's, of course, I don't know what I'm doing, so I reached out to Paul and his, you know, super supportive team in HR, and they helped me. And this is my first request to the board to approve this position, please. Oh, no, they don't do the approval, do they? To consider it, to approve at the next meeting, while you're also approving their proposed budget. Please, and thank you.
I had a quick question. So you kind of answered it, I think. You think that the integration will actually lead to cost savings in the future?
I, 100%. No question.
Director DeVola?
Yeah, you mentioned it would be about a $30,000 increase. It did say pay range would be administrative. Is that for the pay of that person, or is that something different?
Okay, so I almost understand that question. Paul? Because we create, there's some other position. It's not a director-level position. It's a coordinator position, which is kind of in this interregnum between, I think, the prof tech and a director. Was I not right there? Can I go?
I'm Paul Anderson, Executive Director for People and Culture. Happy to partner with Dr. Trottenberg on this project. Estimated increase in cost is salary and benefits. We anticipate, so the, one of the roles that is currently a professional technical position will not be backfilled, and instead will be, this position will replace that one. So there's that incremental cost with moving to this role.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Don't leave me alone up here. It's summer, so we can, we can laugh a little bit.
This is really cool. It's like a real-life lifeline. Director Heil?
I'll be gentle, I promise.
Pretty please, don't ask me about ILF, because then I gotta tag-team the superintendent.
So this is a position that's in my industry, so I know a few things about it. I've been speaking with David about it, because I had an initial concern that there was, you know, some senior-level skills required, and the requirements for hire were kind of junior-level, and so we wanted to true that up. The end result of which is that I will be learning something about our IT organization, because I come from a background of large enterprises that are doing a whole lot of IT self-service, and that is not this environment. So there's a risk that I am overspecking this position. But I do want to make sure that we are going to be hiring somebody who is going to be successful in the role. But it's interesting that you were talking about the cost savings, because I just saw a TikTok on this today of a teacher who was talking about how they have to be a software engineer in order to do their daily job, and specifically mentioned technologies we're using. I gotta go to Schoology, and I gotta go to Power School, and on and on and on and on and on. And so we can, we bring in a central coordinating position. We can find synergies in our technologies, and that is not only going to save us some money in the long run, it's also going to make our teachers' experience so much better.
Director Heil, is there a question in there somewhere?
No, there was no, oh, sorry.
Mostly it was to give you guys some backstory, background information, because I will be sitting in on the interview when they, when they start looking at this person.
And anyone else on the board that wants to sit in on the interview? We don't play favorites in finance.
But, but we do limit you to two.
Oh.
Director Schmidt, do you have any questions?
I'd like to sit on that interview. That'd be great.
Two, great. Less work for me. Awesome. Thank you.
If there's no further questions or no objections, we can move this forward for action?
Am I done? All right, thanks.
And next, we have Abby Atwood with our legislative roundup.
I'm not nearly as funny at all. Amy Atwood, Atwood Public Affairs Contract Lobbyess with the district. It's good to be with you this evening as we review the session and look ahead to what we can expect the next seven months leading up to the 2025 session. Today, I will focus on how school funding evolved throughout the session and answer any questions you have. I hope you had time to review the end-of-session report I sent about a month ago. It was also in your packet for tonight. The session concluded just over a month ago and saw a record number of bills and resolutions introduced at 778. So keep in mind legislators throughout, through the Constitution are allowed five, so that would mean 500, so there were another 278 extra bills that were introduced. Of those, 525 passed, while 180 failed, and I tracked and monitored 55 bills specifically for D-49. As of last week, all the bills that passed have either been signed or vetoed by the governor. This was a record year for introduction and passage. However, only six bills were vetoed, which is actually the average for Governor Polis. The theme of this session in education was undoubtedly school funding, both in the short term and the long term. For years, the topic of school funding has been a major concern for lawmakers and education advocates in this district all across Colorado. The school funding system established in 1994 has largely been unchanged since the passage of Amendment 23 nearly 25 years ago. We've only seen minor adjustments throughout the last 25 years. A number of years ago, the legislature formed the School Finance Interim Committee, which worked for years to rewrite the School Finance Act. Those of you that have been around for a while know that year after year after year after year, I've reported on, unfortunately, the lack of results coming from that interim committee. It's worth noting that interim committee members are legislators. They're not subject matter experts. And after several years of limited success, I mean, the interim committee did work really hard on special education funding, but that was about it. The legislature took action last year to establish the School Finance Task Force. The task force consisted of subject matter experts in school finance, superintendents, CFOs, community representatives, and education stakeholder groups and associations. Their charge was to find consensus built around recommendations for a new school finance formula. The task force recommendations were presented to the legislature before the session started in January. Many of the recommendations had consensus, but some did not, so there was a minority report that was presented as well. I monitored and reported on this task force throughout last year. If all of the recommendations were to be implemented, the state would have to find more than $1 billion to do so. The likelihood of the task force recommendations making it across the finish line this year was slim to none. The likelihood of the task force recommendations making it across the finish line this year was slim to none, like the proposals of the interim committee that the interim, interim committee brought forward in years past. The stalemate was broken this year with the passage of three bills, not just one, each accomplishing a significant step forward in school funding. So let's look at the short term. The passage of Senate Bill 188, which is the funding package, the traditional School Finance Act, that was passed and it does not include the budget stabilization factor, the BS factor, or the negative factor, as it's been called, for the first time in over a decade. The second, looking out to the long term, was House Bill 1448, which was the reform of the school fu- the school form, the School Finance Formula to direct more money to at-risk English language learners and special education students and increase overall spending by nearly $600 million by 2030. And then passage of Senate Bill 233, which creates a two-tier property tax system that protects school district revenues, even as new limits will be placed on tax revenues for all other local governments. Legislative leaders and education advocates acknowledge that these bills only fix some of the funding problems, but not all. First, the reforms do not address adequacy of school funding. That's whether schools are spending enough money to accomplish goals like student achievement. These bills are to address the equity in school funding. Two studies were commissioned in 2023 to look at adequacy, and I think all of us would agree that there is not enough money in education. But these bills were not to address how much money, but how equitably that money is spent. Second, it's impossible to guarantee that the reforms are financially sustainable. Legislative sponsors have repeatedly stressed that they have structured their bills to ensure that the budget stabilization factor will never be needed again. But there's no guarantee that a recession, future law changes, ballot measures, or unforeseen circumstances will not pose new challenges. The budget stabilization factor language in statute was not repealed. So that factor is still available to the legislature, but it will be a very hard decision for legislators to balance the state budget on the back of education again. And we'll hold them accountable to that. I'm going to get a little bit into the weeds with numbers, but please bear with me. When we look at the 2425 funding, the numbers you built your budget around for next year, the state total program funding will be $561 million more than this current year. That is a significant amount of money. So with the BS factor being totally bought down for next year, that means base per pupil funding will go up $419. So you will see that for all of your students, and you built your budget around that. So let's move on to the new finance formula. This is what took up most of the oxygen within education, within the education policy realm. Most school finance, or the outline of the bill with, I'm sorry, let me just start over on that paragraph. Now, let's move on to the new finance formula. Most school finance discussions concern the new formula. The outline of the bill with many, but not all of the task force recommendations was released by the speaker in March. So remember, the legislature had the recommendations before the start in January, but it was in March when we finally saw an outline from the speaker. This didn't surprise us, those of us that are in this policy space. We knew that it was coming. The recommendations and outline were more student-centered, and that is her funding approach, and that is the funding approach compared to the current system. Something, something that here in D49, we have advocated for years is student-centered funding. I shared the outline with Mr. Hiltz and received feedback from him on the foreseeable impacts to District 49. Overall, the new formula will benefit the students of D49. I shared the feedback with Speaker McCluskey and Senator Lundin. Those are the two major bill sponsors, so in the House, Speaker McCluskey, and in the Senate, Senator Lundin, who's been a champion for us throughout the years. Each step of the way, each committee hearing, floor vote, all the votes were counted, and as we passed through the first committee, momentum started to build. Passage was not certain. There was strong opposition from wealthier districts and CEA, all of which moved to support or neutral before the final vote for passage was taken. Speaker McCluskey and Senator Lundin have been in the thick of school finance discussions for years and finally pushed reform across the finish line. The bill reorders and adjusts the weights of factors like at-risk, ELL, special education, district cost of living, district size, and remoteness. These are used to calculate the customized per-student funding allocated to individual districts. Just checking my time. The bill also creates a Mill Levy Override Match Working Group to meet during this interim. If you remember, D49 was the driving force in 2022 behind the legislation that set up the Mill Levy Override Match Fund. So I will absolutely track that committee, and we are working to have people appointed to that task force or that committee from down in this region. The new finance formula bill was amended numerous, there's like 40 amendments. So no, no district technically will lose funding, and CEA had a number of asks as well, and they were granted. The new formula will launch in 20, in the 2025-26 school year. So the next budget you build and will be phased in over six years with full implementation in 2030. Can I keep going? Oh, we're okay, okay. The bill also includes circuit breakers so that the Joint Budget Committee feels comfortable that if there are unforeseen circumstances, they can, they can pull back on that funding. So that got the Joint Budget Committee members in a support position for the bill. It passed almost unanimous, I think it only had two no votes. So are there any questions on school funding or finance?
Director Heil?
Hi, uh, so um, you were talking about how we were benefiting from the new formula, but um, I know once it was approved that there was a chart that was being produced that showed how it would affect all the different districts. And much as I was hoping that we would do much better, it actually showed that D49 had a, a very marginal benefit and that it primarily benefited rural districts. Uh, is, did that change or?
I'm not sure if you saw the very final runs. There was a plus-up that was, was one of the very last amendments. And that was to take those districts that were at the very bottom. There were actually five districts that were considered losers. The biggest one was Mesa in Grand Junction, and Douglas County was considered a loser. So with this plus-up, this point-five plus-up, everyone moved up the scale as well. And the cost of living factor was also adjusted. When we look out to the out-years, with over 550 or almost $600 million being added to K-12 education, that is definitely a benefit. And that is on top of the budget stabilization factor being bought down. So that is nearly a billion dollar, or over a billion dollars within this next, by 2030.
So could you um maybe send us the, the latest chart? Thank you.
Okay, so the legislate, the legislative session is the bookend to the year. The new legislative year really begins now. All the groundwork for legislation is laid between now and January. The next seven months promised to be filled with significant events in the education sector, including ballot measures, legislative elections, and the activities of multiple task forces. There is one task force that I de- that I want to really highlight, and that is the Accountability Accreditation Student Performance and Resource Inequity Task Force. So like the School Finance Formula Task Force, these are subject matter experts. There are district leaders, superintendents, CFOs, education stakeholders that are part of this task force. And they have been meeting for a year. They haven't come forward with any recommendations. They don't need to until the end of this year. And their charge is to come forward with consensus recommendations on the whole accountability and performance framework and structure. So it's really looking at this whole structure that we've been working under in Colorado and seeing what needs to change, what can stay the same, and how do we best serve our students and our families with the performance framework. There are a lot of competing interests when it comes to this issue area. And the task force is built with members from all of the different areas. We could see one big omnibus bill. I tend to think that, that we won't see that. I think we'll see smaller bills, and I think we'll see competing bills as well. The current system was brought forward with those that would be considered reformers, not those that are considered establishment. So there will be a lot of protectionism as well. So that's where I think we'll see, not just from them, but, but competing interests when it comes to what our new framework will look like. I think the legislature is committed to looking at this, at the framework and making changes. It's, it's time, it's been a long time. So we'll see how, how that all plays out. And I will work with Mr. Hiltz on when is the right time to engage. He's already been engaged and knows what's been going on through the associations. Not much really has been going on. But knowing when to engage, who to talk to, who are the influencers? Much of the work happens behind the scenes, even though all the meetings are public. Those conversations beside, behind the scenes are how we move, how we move, not the goalposts, move the markers. And D49 is in such a great position to be an influencer in those conversations. And then lastly, I sent the election report a couple nights ago. You may not have had time to review it. But the primary is just around the corner, if you don't know. And El Paso is a flurry of activity, particularly on the Republican side with primaries. Representative Mary Bradfield and Senator Larry Liston both are facing primary challengers. And Senator Bob Gardner's term limit has opened up a primary in Senate District 12. With regards to the general election, though, this is, this is more fascinating. In the Pikes Peak region, there are three House seats and two Senate seats that are considered to be in play or not safe seats for either party. There are more in-play seats here in the Pikes Peak region than any other place in the state. So that demonstrates the changing demographics down here in the Pikes Peak region. And it'll be fascinating to see how things shake out in November. Throughout the summer and the fall, I attend fundraisers. I meet with legislators, but I also walk with candidates and candidates on both sides of the aisle. This is one-on-one FaceTime. You know how hard it is to knock on doors, so to have somebody that's there to do it with them or just knock out more doors with them. But it's an opportunity for me to take your issues to them. So they hear, what does D49 care about? And we'll know what's happening with these different task forces, and we can take forward, you know, how will these help or hurt the district? And it also puts D49 on the map, so they know that you're a trusted resource for them, that when it's time to draft bills, that they come to us on the front end so we can help draft it and not just react to it once it's introduced. And then you'll also see, last, the property tax measures. Some are good, some are bad. And some hold districts harmless and some do not. And the property tax bill that was passed in the legislature only goes into effect if nothing passes on the ballot in the fall. There may be a special session that's called after all the polling is done, but it is really worth paying attention to what makes it on the ballot because if there is a flat reduction, that also includes the revenues for the district. So that's it. Are there any questions?
One question I had is, you know, frequently, we, we will pass a resolution because of something that's happening at the State House. So I was just curious, do you receive copies of the resolutions we do that you can carry forward?
Absolutely, so the resolutions that you passed this year, I work with Mr. Miller on those. I know ahead of time that those are on your board agenda. And then I know right away what, what has, what's transpired during the meeting. I register your position with the Secretary of State. I have to do that within 24 hours, and then I advocate your position. So I make sure not just our delegation know, but I lobby your position and count votes for your position.
Director DeVola?
Uh, you're awesome, by the way.
Oh!
Um, so you had mentioned the very long name, accountability, something or other. If you could send that actual name to me, that would be great. And then, um, so the, I want to see if I'm clear on this. Would this help to shape and change the school performance frameworks and how we are scored as schools in our school district?
Yes.
Is that the, the point of this committee?
It's the whole thing.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I just wanted to double check I was on the right track.
So what is the timeline that they see even starting? So we're gonna have some little bills, but then I'm assuming that it's gonna be just like last time where it's multiple years of implementation? And so we're gonna enter into another phase of, we're not really sure, and our schools are getting evaluated differently every year for like multiple years, basically, right?
It, it, yes, it could be. And when I say little bills, I mean that in totality, it is rewriting the whole framework and structure. But because it's so contentious that there will be, it has to be broken up into different bills. But you're right, it would, there will be a runway for implementation.
Right, but there'll be a, right. Cause there's gonna be things that everybody agrees on, and then there're gonna be parts they fight about. And things that everybody agrees on will go through first. But we did, what was it, the TCAP for how many years before we went, right, to CMAS?
CSAP then TCAP then CMAS.
Right, and so some of what gets flaunted around as data is in fact reference to the last time we went through this mess, where, you know, the, the tool's not great, but at least you could compare apples to apples. We're gonna be comparing apples to oranges to peaches to grapes for the next three or four years. So just as a community, we need to start kind of having, helping people understand that we're not gonna be able to make those comparisons in the same way either. And I'm, I'm hopeful that it's gonna be a more appropriate system by the time they're done. I'm not opposed to it changing, but I think we all need to be aware and we need to um be strong advocates in the community about what that really means too, because that, that got lost in the noise over the last several years in terms of how D49's performance really is versus, great, you're referring to, you're comparing CSAP results to CMAS results and trying to tell me what they mean. Two completely different evaluative systems, tests, and standards, can't compare. But that community perception is really important too. And I think it would be great if state legislatures were making sure that they advocate on those ends too, so that it helps districts with that, especially given the way in which public education is such a political football nationally right now.
And Peter, didn't they even change CMAS testing after they first rolled it out? Then they changed the testing for CMAS, because I know we had CSAP, then we changed the...
So, yeah, we had, we had CSAP, CSAP then TCAP, then CMAS Park, and then CMAS standalone, and then they changed the cut points on CMAS. So I don't believe we've had four years in a row. I, I've been in Colorado Education for 22 years. I don't believe we've, we've had four years in a row with the same state assessment system. And if you had asked Amy and I one year ago to, uh, you know, what's the probability that we would, we would make major substantive changes to school finance? I'll bet you we would have bet under 10%, under 5%. And yet it happened. And so strangely, maybe that builds some momentum. Maybe that builds, sometimes, w- once a coalition has gotten together on thing one, sometimes they're likely to get together on thing two. And that's why we want to stay engaged, because if it's gonna move, if that coalition's, you know, if they, if they're feeling themselves, that coalition, and now they're gonna tackle the next thing, we wanna be in that conversation. So there'll be times when I'll be in Denver or I'll, you know, stay an extra day at a conference or go up a day early. This is almost always why, is because there's someone or some group where we don't, you know, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. We don't wanna be on the menu, we wanna be at the table.
May I add to that real quick? Is that moving from interim committees to task forces?
Is that moving from interim committees to task forces has really made a difference because it's folks like Peter who are sitting at the table saying, we can implement this, or we can't, or this is fair, or it's not, instead of legislators who have never been in education.
I think that's an important distinction when they have task force made up of subject experts. Because as we've all experienced, anyone can have an opinion. But to actually have background and knowledge of what we're discussing completely changes the discussion. Is there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're on to item 9.5, Applied Advanced Learning Performance Update. Oh, look at this. We get a committee.
Yes, you do. We come as a package here. So, good evening, Board members and Superintendent Hiltz. I'm Sean Norman, Director of Applied Advanced Learning. And I am excited here to give you a performance update of this year's work. I'm going to be very simple about our core kind of motives to doing this here is that this team wants to empower and support students for future success. That's what this department does. We support this by helping schools coach students towards meaningful career and college readiness experiences, including internships and apprenticeships, through the support and delivery of rigorous career and technical education pathways. And finally, by expanding college access through concurrent enrollment programming, allowing students to earn college credits while in high school. This also includes the Career Start Program for hands-on career training. So I just provided you a brief overview of a lot of our work here. So for a deeper dive into our initiatives and our impact, I'd like to invite the Applied Advanced Learning team up here to share their reports with you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Green, and I run the Concurrent Program throughout the district. Many of you have seen this graph in the past. It shows our growth over the years while we've been providing these college courses in and outside of the high school buildings, right? Something you might not know about this particular graph is it does include the Banning Lewis Prep concurrent enrollment figures as well. We brought them on and trained them, taught them, and they are now working, assuming local control and handling that themselves. So we no longer manage their concurrent enrollment. And I just wanted to be very transparent about that. If we go ahead and shift our focus a little bit away from that, we can see here these four zones or hours, and they're completely run within our realm. Many of the zones are experiencing quite a bit of growth. But you're probably going to look at that graph and be able to see right away that Sand Creek is a bit of a standout here. They have really experienced a lot of growth over the last year, year and a half. That's, a big part is done by the cooperation between the principal, Ms. Amy Sanchez Martinez, and Nicole Sides, the Dean of Concurrent Enrollment at that school, working closely with our office to make sure that we're removing any barriers that we can for this larger group of students that are looking for access. And here at Sand Creek, we were able to offer 32 college classes in that one building this school year alone. That, thank you. That's double any other of the zones right now. So again, while everyone is doing an amazing job, I just really did want to give some recognition to Sand Creek for their hard work. We have been tracking our growth for a while now. We use data so that we can start looking at some long-range planning. And in that, we're noticing that our biggest growth periods happen in the spring semester. This is really because we have some very intentional outreach efforts that we're using. We are sending very personal invitations to students and their families when they have qualified for a college course through something like standardized testing. So we'll continue to work on that to make sure our students are aware of the programs. But we will use data in any way we can to be able to provide the best, sorry? I lost it. Choices. Wow, that one was hard. So sorry. Now with data, we've started using it in a different way. We've created a data dashboard. It's an interactive tool that we've gone and given. It's accessible to all of our building, zone, and district leaders so that they can look at the data in each building and across the district anytime that they would like. So it's a really great opportunity. It displays things like our success rates for our students, the demographics of those participating, enrollment within each of those buildings, and a whole lot more that's coming down the line. So we're very excited about that. We made sure to include a user guide for those leaders that are using it so we can make sure they understand how that concurrent enrollment data can be used as a positive effect on their school performance indicators. And then now's my favorite part, and I love to do this. So we have students across the district who are doing a really great job. I've chose three because they are in very separate programs within concurrent enrollment. So we have Emily James. She's from Falcon High School. She was a Career Start student. That means she went to the campus at the college five days a week for three hours a day the entire school year to learn about veterinary assisting. She participated in an internship within the school, I'm sorry, within her college course, and they hired her afterwards. So this summer, she's working at North Springs Referral Center, and she's excited to continue her veterinary medicine education at CSU in the future. Next, we have Savannah Hood. She's from Sand Creek High School. She met her graduation requirements two years ago. By joining this TREP program, this is something through the state that will let us pay for two years of college if she's going to become a future teacher. She's completed that program. She's in the very first cohort of students to do so. The state recognized her, and she was featured in the Gazette for being part of this program. She finished her associate's degree last month, and she's off to UCCS to get that finished. We're very, very proud of her. And finally, we have Leonardo Gutierrez Munoz. He is a Pikes Peak Early College student. He is a first-generation student in his family, and he's adapted really well to the campus environment that they have over there. He has been accepted to the School of Mines with a $20,000 scholarship. But being as financially savvy as he is, he's chosen to stay at Pikes Peak Early College an additional year, which is allowable within their model, and then he will go. So he's deferred by one year, and they're allowing that. So, thank you all so much.
Hi, thank you. I'm Mary Crisco. I'm the Coordinator for Career and Technical Education here in District 49. And I just want to say thank you for letting us come up and showcase what our incredible teachers and our students have done this year. Every single year, there's a report that's released. It's called the Colorado Talent Pipeline Report, and that identifies all of the top careers in our state. This report lists the top high-demand, high-wage, and high-growth careers that are available. And so we use this report in which to build our programs. This year, as you can see, we showed you this graph last year. There are a lot more Xs on the graph for the 24-25 school year. The top in-demand jobs, and you'll be able to kind of follow and see these, are hospitality with accommodations and food services, professional scientific and tech services, which is our IT programs, our coding programs, our engineering programs, healthcare and social assistance, construction, manufacturing, transportation. That being said, we have added our ACE programs, an automotive program, two broadcasting programs, a criminal justice program, and so many more. There are 15 new career pathways that are available to our students this year. Three of them will be at the middle school level that will align with the high school curriculum so that students interested in that career pathway can continue their interest from middle school to high school. Also, from the Data Pipeline Report that is released every year, they estimate that in 2031, 20% of all jobs will require an industry-recognized certification or credential. This year, I'm really pleased to let you know that over 230 students have earned an industry credential in these areas listed here before they'll even graduate from high school. This will open doors for them to get higher-paying jobs. This will help them, whether they're going directly into the Workforce Center or they're going into post-secondary education. They'll be able to earn as they go, and we have had examples of that where students have finished the CNA program and then have worked their way through college doing home care and not incurring student debt. So again, our students are just excelling. Our teachers are really helping them to pass these industry-recognized credentials. This is the first time since 2016, when this program started, that District 49 has hit triple digits. And so we're pretty excited about that. Absolutely. In addition to that, there's another category that they identify through the Career Incentive Program, Development Incentive Program, our CDEP program. And that's the Industry Internship Certification. We also had an additional 49 students earn that Tier Two credential in internships. And then finally, I just want to highlight, we had presented this last year. It was our first house build. This is a partnership with the Home Builders Association in Colorado, or Careers in Construction Colorado. They supply all of the, all of the materials for this program, stipend for our teacher to teach the program. They provide expertise to come in and work alongside our students, to train our students. This is a 1,300-square-foot house, three-bedroom, two-bathroom rancher, and it just sold. Yes, we are very excited. It will be moving to Calhan in the 24-25 school year, and they will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony just prior to moving the house. And so you will all receive an invitation, and hopefully you'll get to come and celebrate with our students as they provided this person a home. And she is so excited. We've gotten to meet the homeowner. And she has asked for some custom upgrades, and the partners are working with her. So she's excited because right now, I believe she's living in a camper on her property. So she's excited to have a home. So thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kelsey Grimaldo, and I am the Choice and Success Program Manager. I oversee all of the work-based learning for the district in ICAP. What a fantastic year we had. Not only are we on the CDE website for best practice in ICAP, but this is our third year leading the region in work-based learning. Here you can see, we had about 130 guest speakers, and that is when industry professionals come into our classroom and engage with our students, talk about how they got to where they are, and speak a little bit to the pathway that they're currently in. We had about 75 site visits, and that is when we take students out to industry, and they tour the facility, hear from those professionals, and just learn what it takes to be in that pathway. We had about 35 job shadows and 60 internships. One of those internships being our phlebotomy internship. Students earned a phlebotomy certification during this internship. And as you can see here, the students are pricking me and the industry partners. So we were able to partner with Matthews View and LabCorp to be able to allow our students to get the certification, to get enough hours and to get enough sticks. So with that industry certification, they are ready to go into industry and start working and in a high-demand pathway, which is fantastic. This year, we had our first annual draft day. And how this came about is I've talked to many business partners and many students about career fairs. And all of them say the same thing. It's kind of pointless. You know, many times, my business partners, like, I get maybe one or two students. And so I have been to many of them, and I see all the candy that the students steal. And so I thought, how do we switch this? How do we make this worth our business partner's time and our students' time? And that is how we came up with Draft Day. And so for Draft Day, we partnered up with the Riley Chrysler Jumpstart Foundation, who offers and specializes in apprenticeships, and our local Workforce Center. During this event, students had the opportunity to interview with local industry partners in the career pathway that they are interested in, which is very, one of our huge focuses. We want to ensure students are talking and meeting professionals in the career pathways that match their ICAP. We want to make sure we're not taking and wasting any of our business time or our students' time. And so as you can see here, our students are interviewing. They went through a series of different rotations. We did a pre-game where they were able to get, ask each other interview questions to kind of get a little of those nerves out. And then a post-game where they were able to meet with the Workforce Center and just learn about all the different opportunities that they have. This was beyond successful. Not only was it so successful to hear the students talk about the, just how exciting it was and the confidence that they had talking to these industry partners, but the best part was hearing from the industry partners. Hearing the industry partners say, this is worth my time. I feel fulfilled, and your students are rock stars. So it was fantastic to hear. All of them were like, please keep us, you know, in, anytime you guys do this, we'd love to join. And so it was a very, very successful event, leading us to 57% of those students being hired. So not only, yes, so not only are students learning how to interview, they are getting jobs. Five of those students are actually right behind us at the El Paso County Public Work, starting at $65,000 a year at 18 years old. One thing that we realized with work-based learning is a lot of times, they think it's only for the students that are career-bound. Work-based learning is for all students. If the students are going to be doctors, engineers. We want to grow our own community, and we want to give these students opportunities to network and meet these industry professionals so they come back and give back to the very community that helped them be where they're at. So yes, that. Couple more. Any questions?
I absolutely love your passion.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Hey, I'm curious about the house that's sold. Are the kids going to be able to be a part of it getting moved? Or, you know?
They have been in the past. They've been present for the moving. And so this is the first one we've ever moved. I've worked with other houses and other projects at any given time. There are five houses being built around El Paso County by high school students. But ours is one of the first ones to be sold. I think it's actually the second, and the second one to be placed. So we're pretty excited about that.
And then where did the proceeds go? Did they go back into the program? Or is there some other place that?
They go back into the Careers in Construction Colorado HBA system to buy more materials because we'll start another house as soon as this one's off our property.
Awesome. Love it. I just love it.
It's fantastic.
Good job.
The great thing about this is a public-private partnership is that once they primed the pump out of the gate, it becomes a recurring resource. And that's just, it's exciting.
If I may, they're actually looking at some of these houses for affordable teacher housing in the future. So it's opening up a lot of doors for different opportunities.
Director Heil?
So I just wanted to applaud all of you because one of the biggest anxieties that our upperclassmen are facing is, you know, uncertain futures, you know, especially those who are interested in careers that require colleges. Everything you guys are doing is focused on mitigating that risk. So students are getting early college credits. They're getting work experience that is going to translate directly to profitable employment. And so I just absolutely love everything. And I particularly want to point out with the concurrent enrollment. So when my daughter was going into Sand Creek as a freshman, we went to orientation. We heard about that program right away. So the schools are doing a really good job of communicating that availability. But I love that you're not just resting on that, that you are actively seeking out other students and saying, hey, you are a great candidate for this. Are you interested? So thank you so much. You guys are doing outstanding work.
Thank you so much. And we're happy to have Natalie in the program.
Director Libria Wright? Director DeVola?
You guys are doing an amazing job. This is so exciting. And I am so thrilled of how many pathways you have been able to add this particular year. And I'm curious, one of my questions is on that chart of the Career and Technical Education, Family and Consumer Science. I noticed we didn't have a check mark in that. What is that? And then what can we do to make sure we have that in the future?
Well, we do have it starting at Falcon Middle School this year. A lot of that is life skills, personal finance. It's also encompassed, which is on the list, the interior and fashion design is a portion of that program. It's kind of an umbrella because even hospitality falls underneath Family, Consumer Science. And so does education, like some of the teacher programs and early childhood education. So even though we have that and there's no check marks, there's subcategories that we do have, that we do offer those programs for.
And then, I really love seeing that house. I will tell you that I bet that house is better-built than my house because they take the care and the time to really measure things out, and they're not just, you know, packing houses like builders do these days. And so, I'm incredibly proud of those kids. They did a great job, so. I haven't seen the house, but I know it's better-built than mine.
They'll have, they'll have a tour when they do the ribbon-cutting. But one of the things, because you mentioned, you know, it might be better-built, the trusses came for the house, and the teacher, and keep in mind, there have been five or six other houses being built at the same time. We all get the trusses from the same company. Our teacher and our students were the ones who realized that they were off, and so, they had to go back to the manufacturer, and they had to be, they had to be fixed. And so, all the other houses, everyone just kind of said, "Well, we're just going to shim it up, and we're going to make it work." And it was actually our teacher and our students who said, "No, this should be right from the beginning."
Exactly. They should have built my house.
I have just a couple. Who came up with the great idea of Draft Day?
So, it was a mutual, me and our business partner Renee, who runs the Jump Start Foundation.
That is a wonderful idea, especially because you're all doing such a great job on reinforcing post-secondary workforce readiness with all of the options that you have. Now, this looks like it's a manufactured home. I'm assuming it arrived in pieces, and they put it together, did the drywall tape texture, and assembled it?
Pretty much, yes. But they're, they just, again, from the foundation all the way up, they are building and making all the cuts and doing all the things that they need to do to build the house.
I want to interject. This is not a manufactured home.
It's not a manufactured home.
This is a stick-built studs, mofu blocks, floor joists, the whole thing.
Yeah, well, that's interesting to know, just because of the roof design and what it looks like. So, they actually poured a foundation for it as well?
No, as you can see from the pictures, it's actually sitting on blocks, which will allow a truck to come in and move it and place it on the foundation.
Yeah, that was my question, is out in Calhan, are they going to excavate and do the foundation, or will that be subbed out?
Actually, our students will not do that. The homeowner has already contracted with someone to come and pour a basement foundation, and then the house will just be placed on top of it. So, and they'll build, like, the porches and things like that onsite.
That's wonderful. So, I guess the homeowner then put an unfinished basement, and they're going to place it on top of that?
Yes.
Great expansion. No, this is wonderful. And as you can see, our meeting has been briefly hijacked by a Pueblo butterfly that has joined our meeting. But I, I just wanted to thank you. Is there any other questions? Oh, by the way, I could make that joke about Miller Moth's, my husband's from Pueblo, so we're good here. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, we are up to the Communication Department Performance Report.
Good evening, Board. David Nancaro, Director of Communications. Lovely to be with you tonight. As I was getting ready to come to tonight's meeting, my son Memphis, five-years-old, said that I look memf-tacular tonight. So, there you go. This is one of my favorite things that I get to do, and Mr. Hiltz and Mr. Anderson will attest that if anybody's going to push us past 10 o'clock tonight, it's me because I love talking about my team and the work that we're doing. So, timer's not going yet, which means I have a few minutes. So, anyway, we'll jump into it. So, a lot of exciting things to share with you tonight, some that are not actually in the presentation itself, just because in the past few days, there's been a lot of fluid things that are happening within the Communications Office, a few things that I'll be able to share with you here tonight, some new information about some recognition that the Communications Department has received just within the past couple of days from the Colorado School Public Relations Association Group, as well as some hiring that we've been able to do. So, we'll get to that here in just a few moments, so I'll move through our slides and get to that here shortly. So, starting off with a few of our traditional metrics that we're, that we track at the D-49 Communications Office, is we track social media engagement. That is one of our indicators of satisfaction among our customers, and we are happy to, pleased to report that we have overtaken D-11 on one of our key social media metrics in terms of Facebook page likes and followers, which is something that we've been trying to do for quite some time, really sort of been able to overcome based on some changes, I think, that have happened at D-11. But nevertheless, we are still now the strong leader in terms of engagement on social media, on Facebook. We are climbing on this, on the Instagram side of things. We are 200 more followers up today than we were, when we were back in November, when we last presented some of these metrics. So, we're, we're excited about those engagement figures that we see. The next slide reveals, goes, takes us through our key metrics that we are talking about. We're very pleased with these numbers from January through May. You can see the number of original stories told depicted here, really in the high double digits. We're excited about that. As far as our turnaround time, when we have our comm and promo plans, those are requests for coverage that come in from around the district. We track, have we turned those over in the time that, that is expected by our customers? 100% for three of our months and close to 100% for April and May. And then, we also track balance so that we're making sure that we are telling the stories adequately across all of our zones, and we are continuing to hit our balance every single time that we track that metric, so we're pleased with that as well. In the works right now, in progress, we are rounding out the team as we speak, filling some vacancies. I wanted to point out that we have received an acceptance for the position of the Compliance and Customer Service Specialist, who is currently scheduled to start with us on June 24th. And then, we are also tracking a, an acceptance for the Internal Communications Manager position, tracking to start in the same week. But I am not without superstition, and so, I don't talk to my pitcher during a no-hitter, and I will allow these folks to get settled in and with the team before we talk a little bit more about them. But I'm very excited, with some very hard work and some very dedicated time spent with folks who are in this room, we really believe that we have found some great candidates to join the team. Sitting with us here tonight is Kristin Sokoloski. She is our Broadcast Media Specialist. She is live-streaming for us here tonight. And in addition to, you will see in our scorecard in one of our last slides in the deck, we won't go through that tonight, but you can take a look at some of the things that we've been doing as a department. We have done 30 original videos from the start of this calendar year up until now, and a lot of that production has been because of Kristin's hard work and settling in and really kind of hitting the ground running for us as a video production specialist. So, we're, we are thrilled to have Kristin with us, and we'll, we'll be thrilled to announce the other team members here as they get settled in. As we move forward again with some of the things that the Communications Office is working on now, we were, we will schedule our annual planning and strategy meeting coming up here in the next few weeks, once we get our folks settled in, and some time to get everybody aligned and kind of break the ice a little bit. During those meetings, we talk as a team about what are the tasks ahead for us, large tasks that are scheduled, and others that we would like to accomplish and see as a team, that we would like to continue moving forward on as well. Our final-site transition, moving from blackboard to final-site, is well underway. We are working on having all of our content migrated from blackboard to final-site as we speak. So, that's going on, and we're tracking with an early June, excuse me, early July ability to start getting folks in and doing some training to figure out more about keeping our webpages up to date and all done with a brand-new system. So, that's going to be a big lift as we move into the new, new school year. We're also working on our planning for the showcase Board of Education meetings for school year 2425. The, the plan of this is to take these board meetings four times in the next school year out to our various campuses in our zones. There's a lot of reasoning for that, one of which is that folks who are in the zones may not necessarily have to travel so far to come and see the work of the Board of Education taking place in their own communities. So, we're really working on that. We've spoken with our zone leaders and our principals at our four main campuses to start getting the ball rolling on that. So, there's going to be more information and discussions moving forward as we work out logistics, as well as how we, how our schools and our zones want to showcase what they do at these meetings. So, it's going to be great. We're really looking forward to it. And in July, a number of the team will be attending the National School Public Relations Association Conference that takes place in Seattle this year, and that's an opportunity for us to do professional development along and some networking with a lot of other school public relations professionals from across the country. We're looking forward to that. Speaking of spras or COSPRA's, NSPR's, all of the spras, the D-49 Communications Office was recently honored at the COSPRA Conference up in Breckenridge this year for Awards of Excellence, and we are happy to report that the D-49 Communications Department was awarded Excellent in Video, Writing, and for the Podcast. So, we were really happy about that. Glad to bring home those awards and those recognition. It's a testament to the hard work of the team. And just as a note, COSPRA groups in together anyone that has an affiliation with D-49, so I'm pleased to report tonight that Goal Academy, or Goal High School, also recognized with an award for excellence for their annual plan. So, that goes to Alan Van Norman, our associate friend and colleague from Goal High School. So, with that, I would open it up to any questions you may have.
One thing I wanted to let you know is I actually have a teacher in District 11 who asked me to get her copies of Discover magazine. And so, when you have teachers from a nearby district who's requesting copies of that magazine, that, that's really a compliment for all the hard work that you do. So, are there any other questions? Director Schmidt?
Thank you for telling us what the acronym is.
Sure.
It's making me insane.
My pleasure.
I don't want to be the Debbie Downer here, but there is one area that I am concerned about, and that is on the website. I've had constituents say that they're being kind of bullied. Cyberbullying is happening. So, I just wanted to let you know that's happening and find out kind of how you guys deal with that. Or we can meet, you can, we talk it over too. That's fine.
Sure. I, I, we do, I, I would respectfully disagree that, that anyone on the team engages in cyberbullying.
No, 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 not your team, some of the posts from, from the public, yeah.
Sure.
So, I believe what Director Schmidt is referring to is that sometimes on the comment threads of Facebook posts, people do not meet our standards of care and respect. That is true, and it is a calculated decision. There are posts where we've been intentional, we've had posts where we've held the post up for a certain period of time and then taken it down because we just don't want to leave that toxicity up indefinitely. Boards being political entities sometimes attract, you know, competing political philosophies, and people are not always as gracious, perhaps behind a screen as they might be in person, or maybe as reserved as they might be in person. And so, we try to manage that, but the, the alternative, the, the pathway to no hurt feelings requires us to suppress a lot of positive content. So, historically in the district, we have accepted that the price of transparency is that some people will behave badly and will, and will speak in ways that are disrespectful and uncaring and unkind, but that's the price we pay to have transparency. I would invite you, for example, to go look at other large school districts who have Facebook presence. They typically don't allow any comments. And so, if you counted our number of comments compared to, we, you should put that on the chart because we would, we would need a very tall axis for our comments compared to our local competitors' comments, and that's why that's true.
I appreciate the, the assist on that, Mr. Hiltz. And, you know, I would, I would also would invite anyone who visits our Facebook page to review our, our Expectations of Conduct, which are posted right there at the top of the page. But again, we, we, we value discourse, and we value the free exchange of thoughts, and we really work diligently to monitor, monitor and moderate to ensure that folks are having an opportunity to speak and be heard, whether that's going to be positive or negative based in the context of the conversation.
Thanks.
And we'll also continue to try to overwhelm any negative with all of the excellence and the positivity that is going on at School District 49.
Along those lines, I just thought of a question. We've had different things, different accounts that may not be real people or legitimate accounts, and I don't know if there's any way to factor in for false identities. I mean, it's one thing for free speech, but when it's a, when it's not a genuine person, I'm just curious if that's ever been considered.
I think that's, that is a topic and a question that school districts across the country are trying to sort out themselves as well as us. So, we are certainly not a unicorn when it comes to folks who are posing as someone else or creating content through a sock puppet account, is sometimes known in the social media sphere. And it gives us an opportunity to take a look, though, at how we manage comments and commentary that gives us the potential avail, opportunities that are available through the different filtering aspects of pages like Facebook. And so, I think we've had some positive discussions about that, and maybe an opportunity to look at how we're managing those comments. So, if we have any updates, we will be sure to let you know.
Usually, when you read down the whole list of comments, usually when you read down the whole list, our, because our community is highly engaged in those comments, community members end up calling each other out. So, often, when I see people get nasty, I see other people call them out for being nasty right back and saying, "Hey, you know, who do you think you are? That's not the way you talk to somebody," kind of thing, or posting something back. And so, and same thing with the false accounts. I, I've seen multiple times where people have called people out and said, "Ha ha, I know who you actually are." And so, some of that policing is happening just by the group of people who are engaging, and I personally like that people can comment on it at some level because we are getting more engagement. People engage more with a post that they can then say something about or share with people than something that they just see, I think. And sometimes, that, that discussion back and forth ends up being more supportive of the district and more convincing of what the accuracy actually is because it's coming from people who aren't necessarily representatives of the district, who are then saying, "Well, I have, you know, my kid goes there and da-da-da-da-da, and da-da-da," you know? Well, you know, so, I like that, I like that that's kind of a part of who we are personally. But that's just me.
Thank you.
Dave, I appreciate that you're taking the time to look at it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Sure.
Director D'Avola?
Yeah, with the, with the comments or text threads, or not text threads, but Facebook threads, have there been times or incidences where the district did delete or erase or because it was completely out of line?
There are very rare exceptions that we would actually delete a comment. If we did, we would also explain that it has happened and why. And so, a lot of, and so, again, the, the expectations are laid out on our Facebook page in terms of the types of discourse that we expect and what we won't tolerate or would be subject for removal. However, I was just kind of thinking about this question tonight, and I can think of maybe two times in my entire almost seven years here that I've actually removed a comment, but again, provided some clarity and some expect, and some background as to say, "Look, we did this because the comment, comment here clearly did not live up to any of the expectations set forth in our, in our, in our policy." Well, and policy's not the right word. Our expectations of conduct. Sure, absolutely. And, and therefore, we have, we have pulled that down. So, we will be transparent if we are to ever delete any content or remove a context, a thread.
However, I do, I do want to explain a Facebook dynamic. Some of the, the more malicious actors, the people that think we should be jailed for having different political opinions, they often are resistant to, to the dialogue, and so they block people. And so, you might go to our website, and you might see that Mr. Nancaro or I have responded to somebody, I stay off the Facebook, but somebody has responded to somebody, and you're like, "Well, what are they talking about?" That probably means that you are blocked, and that blocking happens pretty indiscriminately. And then, what's really interesting is somebody will say something like, "I think we should have a picnic on February 31st." And then, they'll, you'll get a string of comments like, "Well, that's a dumb idea. There's no February." And then, they go and delete the original question. That's called a dirty delete. And so, what's left is the shell- And so, what's left is the shell of an argument, but none of the original spine of the argument. These are things that happen on social media. We know that they happen, we accept that they happen, because we believe that the solution to bad ideas is better ideas. The solution to bad speech is more speech. And that's a, that's a fundamental First Amendment position, and, and we have upheld that for longer than my tenure. Part of the reason I wanted to come to D-49 is because of that transparency and openness. So, we let bad speech happen, because we believe our community does a really good job of policing it. And we're part of our community, we do a good job of policing it. But we rarely, rarely delete. I, I think Dave is right. I can remember two comments, one of them was a threat, and one of them had some personal information that was not appropriate to be public.
And?
Am I correct, too, that the default that shows up, and a lot of people who don't do a lot of technology may not know this, but the default is the most relevant comments?
Yes.
So, they don't see everything unless they know to go click and go the dropdown to all comments?
Right.
And so, I've seen that come up several times with people, the default is most relevant. So, I think that could be part of the confusion of people who think they're being censored. So, are there any other questions?
Just on that, we also aren't necessarily the only ones who remove things. So, Facebook, Nextdoor, all of those companies have their own algorithms and their own code of conduct, that if someone reports a comment or a post, Facebook itself can pull, like, pull it off, and some people, when they keep doing it, get Facebook banned by Facebook for a certain amount of time, or Nextdoor banned by Nextdoor, and it has nothing to do with the owner of the page, it has to do with the standards of the owner of the organization, of Facebook as a company, or Nextdoor as a company, and what they're pulling off. And so, you'll see entire things disappear for that. So, between dirty deleting and Facebook police that are, is Facebook and not D-49, those are things we don't have control over either. And I see lots of dirty deleting when people get called out for being jerks, because they don't want someone, you know, that, that's why we teach our teenagers to screenshot when they have things that people are sending them that are, are not kind, that if we need to follow up, it's screenshot the whole conversation, and you best not delete anything you said either before you screenshot it. All right, so that adults can help them navigate, but that happens, adults are worse about it than teenagers are, I think.
Are there any other questions? I want to just say thank you, and just keep, keep up the excellent work, and congratulations on the awards.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Will do.
And, there is no second public comment, so this meeting is adjourned.
Do we have miscellaneous? Do we have miscellaneous?
Is there something you wanted to add for miscellaneous?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that we've got to be transparent, and we can't be putting men, things on the agenda into consent that are big-ticket items.
I appreciate that. Just know, some of that is subjective, but remember also that we do have agenda-setting forms, and some of the things that come up on our agenda are timelines that have to be met, or they could be things that are required by the state, so it's not like they balloon up. So, there is a template, so you'll get the initial one, and then things can be added on, so.
And the one that I had concerns about was originally a discussion item at a work session, and we voted on it tonight.
Okay, is that, are you talking about the handbook again?
Yes.
Okay, and Dr. Lamont said that she'd be happy to, yeah?
Yes, and I will be talking with her.
All right. Thank you, the meeting's adjourned.